Good evening. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Tonight, our sole purpose of the special school committee meeting is to get to know Dr. Mary Lou Bergeron. Dr. Mary Lou Bergeron is the current Assistant Superintendent for the Lawrence School District. Couple of housekeeping things. Please resist the urge to live tweet, out of fairness to all of our candidates that will be visiting us over the course of the week. I'm going to start out with some quick introductions. Of course, we have Dr. Mary Lou Bergeron in the hot seat. We have Mr. Manny Mullis from our Wilmington School Committee. This is Ginny Bonnich Wilmington School Committee. I am Julie Broussard. I've got Dr. Leslie Quick. And this is Mary Jane Burns. Okay? And also, before we get started tonight, I'd like to take a moment of silence so we can reflect on the events of a year ago today. Okay. Thank you. I think we'll start our evening by giving Dr. Bergeron an opportunity to make an opening statement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having me here today. I guess I'm going to, some of you have heard some of this, I'm going to apologize in advance because you've been with me some points today. But just to give a little background, I'm a 34-year educator, public education. I started out as a special education teacher, so my bachelor's degree is in special education. My master's degree is in reading, because that came in very handy in the work that I was doing with our special ed population. I then went on to a school psychology degree, CAES, and then my doctorate is in counseling and school psychology, which I've applied throughout my administrative career, actually, has come in very handy. I moved from the classroom into program management for the special education department, helping to design programs and create new programs for students as they were emerging populations developing. I then moved into the development of a student support services division within the Lawrence Public Schools. So we had started out, we had about five counselors and five nurses serving all of our students, and that was probably only about 8,600 students at that time. We have now grown to 13,800 students, so we've seen a huge influx of students over the last couple of decades. So we have expanded those services now to include about 45 nurses and 45 counselors across the district to address the varying needs of students that are arriving on our doorstep, and to address their special education needs and their health nursing services needs. Upon that kind of getting up and running, I became the Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Support Services. So I kept the special education and all the supports that were underway, and I took over the operations side of the school system, which was safety and transportation, HR, IT, facilities, and finance. So I'm kind of conversant in all of those areas, so I had different people that ran each division, but they all reported in through me in terms of the work that we were accomplishing together. One of the big parts of that work was to ensure that everybody knew that their role was to improve student achievement. So even the facilities director knew that what he did every day impacted the lives of children and what they were needing to accomplish. The nurses became very proficient at having word walls in their nurses' office so that while students were waiting to be seen, they weren't losing time, and they could have a book, or they could be reviewing the words of the week that they needed to know, so that they weren't losing time while they were waiting maybe to get their medication or to be seen by the nurse. So everybody had the same focus, because they knew that their job was to help support achievement for students. For about two and a half year time, in the early 2000, late 2009, I took over as interim superintendent. At that time, we had had a superintendent that had been indicted on some criminal charges. So during, for two and a half years, I stepped in and took over that leadership role and maintained the district as we went through a lot of legal challenges and ethics investigations and attorney general and inspector general doing their pieces of work. Following all of that, I then stepped back into my assistant superintendency when the district was put into receivership in December of 2012. The receiver has the power of the school committee and the power of the superintendency, so it's a very different world that we're in now in terms of work that's happening in the district. And I wasn't looking to leave. I have a good job there, I know everybody, but I was feeling I was getting removed further and further from my work, being in the classrooms and being in the schoolhouses. So when the Wilmington job came across my desk, I looked at it seriously, and I looked at what you were looking for, and I thought, gee, I have many of these skills and traits that you're looking for here, and I thought it was the right time to apply, because I felt it would put me back in a place where I could refocus and get back to my love and passion, which was spending more time in classrooms, supporting teachers and administrators, and doing the daily work with children. So that's why I come before you at this point in time.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just for our audience, how we're going to run this, so we're going to take turns going through questions, and certainly allow each one of us an opportunity to push a little bit further if there's an area that we're interested in, and we'll see how the conversation goes. I'm going to start, and then we'll kind of work our way around this way. But you already answered one of my questions for me, but I would ask you this. We're going to be seeing three candidates over the course of the week. You may or may not know the other two, obviously, their names are out there in the public. What do you think sets you apart from those other folks that have great backgrounds as well?
I think what sets me apart is the scope of work that I have done in the past. So I've touched on virtually every activity in a school system, from the curriculum end to the facilities management, to development of budgets, to overseeing special education and developing programs to ensure students are getting those services, reducing out-of-district tuition rates by bringing programs back in-house. I'm conversant with curriculum. I'm very familiar with the new teacher education evaluation, the educator evaluation system. We've been utilizing her for a couple of years in our district. So I think I have a wealth of varied experiences. I also have a strong background with construction. I did our $110 million high school campus that has six standalone high schools on a campus model for about 3,300 students. So I know what you're doing and what you're going to be doing over the next six to eight months to complete your high school and be ready to move in by next February. So I think I bring a variety of skillsets that could help move the district forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you.
And welcome to Wilmington.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wilmington has been working towards taking steps in increasing technology within our district by creating a district-wide infrastructure and working towards a one-on-one initiative in our new high school, and which will eventually be rolled out in our middle school as well. Where do you see the best use for technology within education today, and what steps would you take to continue to strengthen the goal of a 21st century education for our students?
I think the role of technology has to be embedded into every classroom at this point in time. Students now are so active and able to get information that they need in a moment's notice, that they should be able to have access to those things as they're doing research, as they're learning about new content, being able to draw down information that will supplement what the teacher is teaching in their core content. Being able to use response systems to immediately check for knowledge and understanding in the classroom is really beneficial to teachers, to be able to know, have they actually gotten what I've been teaching this class? Did they miss out on something? Do I have to go back and maybe look at again? So an immediate use of a technological device where you can take a quick assessment and know that students, oh, they did get it, okay, we're all set, we can move on to the next thing, or I have to circle back with these two or three students, to make sure that they're on boards before I move forward tomorrow. I think our students are very savvy with technology, and sometimes it's more of an issue for our own staff to feel as comfortable utilizing it without feeling like they're going to lose control of what's happening in the classroom. But I think that it has to be pieces that we're integrating fully in all of your core contents, and of course, in the arts. They're valuable in terms of being able to utilize photography and embedded images when you're doing presentations, and it helps them to develop the skillset, so that they can put forward a presentation to show that they've learned the content, which they're going to have to do as they move on into college or out into the work world. In terms of moving the initiative forward, money is always an issue. So today, actually, in talking to some of the teachers, we talked about looking at there are some grants out there, foundation grants, some of the big companies are helping to support technology initiatives in schools, and looking at those that would be beneficial, that might help to support some of the expansion of the technology within your school system.
Very good. Thank you very much. Dr. Quick?
Thank you very much. Dr. Bergeron, thank you again, and we spent quite a bit of time together last week, so my question is, do you, in the last week, I was able to hear from a lot of your administration staff of all your strengths, and you just set yourself apart and gave us some of your, some information as to areas that you feel are your strongest. On the other hand, what do you feel might be an area that you're not quite as strong in, or a weakness, and, second part of this question is, what have you done to overcome those weaknesses?
I think there's an area that I struggle with, and I constantly have to remind myself to step back. Sometimes I am a little impatient about moving things forward that I want to move forward, and sometimes I would say, you know, it's easier for me just to do it than to help mentor somebody to get it done, because it's going to take longer. But I step back over time and say, you know, wait, I need to give them the time, just like I asked teachers to give students wait time and time to get their work done. I, as a leader, need to model that and be able to step back and say, wait a second, I know I could do it, probably in a half hour and be done, but this is what I want this person to learn how to do, so I need to give them the time and support so that they can actually get to the answer on their own, because they're going to need to be able to do it again later. And so at times, I have to temper that, okay, I could get it done, and we can move to the next thing, with, wait a second, I need to give people time to do that. And I'm very cognizant of it. Sometimes I can finish people's sentences because I'm trying to push, so I try and really hold back on that to make sure that I'm not stepping over and letting people actually develop the skill on their own.
Thank you. Great. Mrs. Bonnich?
All right. So Lawrence and Wilmington are very different communities. Why do you feel you are a fit moving from such a large community to Wilmington? What do you see are the hurdles, and how would you handle them? And please be specific.
Okay. You're right. Lawrence and Wilmington, they're almost polar opposites. I do think, though, that education is education, no matter where you're going, in terms of having good instruction, good professional practice, helping to cultivate teachers and leaders, and being able to develop them. So I think those are skills that transfer no matter where you're going in terms of a school system. I believe that in looking at this move, the big piece that appealed to me was the move to being able to be in a place where I could spend much more time in direct contact in the schools. That's a piece that I've missed over the last probably five years in the work that I've been doing, and really wanted to be able to spend time, at the end of this time now, working with staff, helping them to develop their leadership as teachers, and empowering them to their work, and then helping the leadership develop their work so that they, you're poised to have your own leadership growth within your own community. So I think some of the challenges for me are coming into a new town and needing to learn all of the way your town functions. The town meeting concept is totally new to me. It's not how we've, I've ever had to go through a budgeting process. I think working with municipal leaders is working with municipal leaders, no matter which school system you're in. But I think the challenge would be to learn how the processes work here, and to get time to know what the resources are that are available within the community, in order to be able to tap into those, to move the initiatives forward that we want to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mullis, your turn.
Dr. Bergeron, thanks for joining us. It was great to spend some time with you today. My question, there are certain times when programs come up to a vote in the school committee which can be seen as controversial. Sometimes dividing the community, even dividing the school committee, where some of us may actually be opposing certain programs. As the superintendent, if you strongly believed that a program would be beneficial to the students, how would you go about, and what steps would you take to promote it to the parents, to the teachers, and get the school committee to back that program? And if you would, please, can you give me an example of experience you might have had like that?
Sure. I think one of the big parts of, if you're going to look at any kind of program development, is you need to get buy-in from the people who are going to have to implement the program. So I would first want to bet it with the schools and the school leaders to say, is this really something that you see as valuable added for your community, and will help move your agenda forward for your school? Because other than that, it's me saying, this is a great program, but nobody wants to do it. So I would start there. I would then have some open discussions with parents about what do they see the value of the program? What are the things that would be beneficial to them? Why we think it would be helpful to the community at this point in time for it to come in? I would provide the school committee with a lot of data on why, where it's been effective, what the data shows about that, and why, how it has worked in other communities that might be similar to Wilmington, so that you understand that it's not just, oh, I picked this program because I like it, and it might be helpful, and I've seen it work, but that it really has a foundation, a research base, that would prove that it would be effective in this community as well as it has been in other communities. So in Lawrence, we had, we adopted some new curriculum that parents were not quite sure that they wanted to invest in, in terms of some of our health and wellness programs around our nutrition services and the development of our wellness policy and the initiatives we put in place, like Fuel Up &amp; Play, and Fit 60, and those types of programs. And parents are like, you know, my children do that after school, and we're saying, but we know that they're a captive here, and we know that the fitness and the obesity rates in our community are high, so we felt that it would be beneficial. So through education and having the nurses do some communication with parents, and having the kids actually try it for a little bit before we said we're going to go full force with it, the kids actually started to enjoy it so much, they were convincing the parents. Then indeed, this is what they wanted to do. They were willing to come in a half hour early so that they could do their Fuel Up &amp; Play activities in the morning before they had their healthy breakfast. And then we rolled it out one by one in a school, as parents started to see it work, then it becomes built upon. And then the school committee sat there and said, oh, jeez, you're right, look at the data. The data's showing us that it's working. And then the statistics in the community have showed that the value it's added over time, because the obesity rates are going down. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Burns, please.
With graduation rates for special education students being low, how would you propose to strengthening our current program to ensure a higher graduation rate, as well as supporting and creating new opportunities for our higher achievers?
Okay. I think that for the special ed students, in terms of graduation rate, it's really looking at where are the pockets where they're starting to struggle? Is it, are they coming into the high school already, having difficulty that's going to help slow down their progress, or not help them access fully their high school? And starting to put things in place early on that give them the extra time and extra supports that they need in order to master the content, in order to be able to graduate either on time or within that next year that they're going to need with the diploma that will allow them to go on to high school, or side of high school to post-secondary. Sometimes we wait too long, and kids have become so disenfranchised with school that it's hard for them to say, I'm going to put that extra effort in, or I'm going to do that extra time, whereas if you start it early on, it becomes part of their culture throughout high school. It's just what the expectation is, and they'll do that work with you. Some of that can be pieces of online supports, tutorial supports, enrichment types of activities that are engaging them, so that they want to be there every day doing the work. We talked a bit about athletics today. For some kids, that's the hook, and that they know to stay on the athletic team, they've got to do, and they'll put in whatever time they have to. Others, it's the arts. Others, it's, you know, being part of a club that's at school. So you try and leverage those things to help them to say that they need to do the extra part of the academic work to be successful. In terms of the enrichment, I think as you look more at differentiating what's happening in the classroom, there's ways to provide the enrichment pieces for students who are excelling, and pushing them and giving them additional assignments that they will challenge them, while also working with the students who need that extra support by having a classroom that's very flexible in terms of its design, and the design of the lessons that you're offering in the classrooms.
Thank you. Dr. Bergeron, could you please give us some examples of how you've worked? For my question is, we've had, over the last few years, we have principals retiring, we have some turnover with principals. I'd like you to give us some examples of how you have worked with principals to improve their performance as instructional leaders and administrators.
We have regular meetings with our leaders. We've done institutes where we kind of lay out what, where goals are for the district and aligning their goals. We do a lot of, I do a lot of one-on-one work with them, in terms of sitting with them and coaching them, going along with them on walkthroughs in their classrooms, seeing what they're seeing, discussing it in terms of, what are you seeing, what will be your next steps with that teacher, and helping them to kind of figure that out, so that they know what my expectation is, and helping them to figure out what they need to be doing next. And then providing them with additional supports, additional professional development and professional learning, because sometimes we forget that once you hit that principalship, you don't stop growing. There are still skills that you're trying to develop and learn, so making sure that they are getting that kind of training and support, so that they feel comfortable. We've brought in people to provide more direct coaching. They feel it's an area that they really would like somebody to come in and support them, you know, come in once every couple of weeks and just kind of help them talk through their pieces, because sometimes it's very different talking with a colleague versus talking with a supervisor, because sometimes they're afraid to show their weaknesses to a supervisor for fear that that will get them knocked down. So I've tried to help coach them along those types of lines. Sometimes, instead of doing the evaluation piece, I have become the coach for the principal, and somebody else in the district is doing their evaluation, so they actually have someone that's helping, in a supportive model, in a mentoring model, that is not their evaluator, so that they can actually have a very open conversation about where they're struggling, what they think they need to develop and work on, and be able to bounce that off of me as the coach, rather than saying, okay, you're my evaluator, I'm not sure I want to show that at this point in time. So it's really a different hands-on, depending on what the needs of the individual.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Well, we're talking about improvement and growing. How do you want to improve yourself in the next year, and what is on your list for professional development?
I think one of the things I'm really focusing in on right now is really getting as familiar as possible with the Common Core state standards. Pretty familiar with the ELA components and most of the math components. So I've been doing professional development, some online work, and some research work on the Common Core state standards, and looking at them in terms of what are the power standards that, if we really focused heavily on the power standards in terms of making sure students are very comfortable and very competent in the power standards, then the other standards fall in line, and those are the ones that they're going to be able to show and demonstrate more frequently in terms of all the assessments that they're going to have to take. So that there are some that just have better bang for what you're going to do in terms of teaching the content, and that they will be able to then utilize them to get some of the other content that they want to do. So I'm really invested heavily in that, because I have not been working in that realm as much in the last year or so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mrs. Bonnich?
How did and how would you implement technology integration while keeping the teachers on pace without having them feel overburdened? Please be specific.
We integrated technology in the district back in, oh, 2010. We used ARA funding to invest heavily in technology, particularly MIMI O technology and smart boards. So we started by having a training for staff, and we trained 15 staff members who became kind of the technology gurus in their schools, so that we had somebody that they could easily go to within their own building, and they could go back and forth with it if they weren't sure. We then piloted classrooms so that we were rolling it out with teachers who were readily able to access the technology first, because some of the new teachers coming out are very familiar with the use of the technology, so we had them start first to implement, so that other teachers had classes that they could actually go and see how it worked, and see that it's not as intimidating as it looks, so that they would be able to say, oh, okay, I could do that. Oh, okay, you started there, and this is my next step. And then, of course, mostly your kids today are very comfortable utilizing the technology. So we said to teachers, if you're not as comfortable with it, put it out, utilize, even if you use the document camera part of the equipment, to just put your stuff up on the screen, and students start utilizing it. As students get more comfortable with it, the teachers said, oh, okay, look at, they're doing it, that's very quick. So it's kind of utilizing all your resources to make sure that you can roll out in a concerted way, and know that you're going to have some holdouts, that once they start seeing everybody else use it, they'll kind of get curious about, oh, you were able to do that? How come you were able to pull that film clip off of, you know, Discovery Ed and show that as part of your science lesson? I want to know how you do it. So it kind of builds its own momentum with the staff, because they see that it's not making their work harder, it's actually making their life easier, because they're able to embed more resources within their lesson planning that helps them to differentiate for all students.
Thank you.
Dr. Bergeron, we have been talking a lot in the school committee about unfunded mandates, specifically about PARC and evaluations. We're fortunate to have MJ, who keeps us educated on PARC and all the changes that are coming up.
Don't make me twitch.
But I wanted to ask you what your views are on PARC, and if you can talk to that, and also talk about unfunded mandates that are coming down the pipeline, and the challenges that we have as a district, and how you would handle it if you were superintendent.
I believe in assessment and accountability, so I'm going to put that out there. I think the MCAS has been a valuable tool to make sure that we're actually moving students forward, and that they are getting a very strong foundation in the core contents. I don't think PARC is going to be that greatly different than MCAS in terms of how it's going to correlate, in terms of what we're already assessing. I think for other states, it's going to be a much bigger leap to get to it. I do have a concern about the fact that they want to do it all online. I think that that piece of the work is not viable in many communities, because the technology's not there to be able to do an online assessment of that many students in the timeframe that it's going to come out. Another concern I have about PARC is the number of sessions that students have to take and the amount of time that will be testing. It will be a longer period of time than you're doing on MCAS, and that's time that's lost from ongoing instruction. So I would support it if indeed the state was going to say, you know what, we're going to make sure everybody has the access and the technological devices they need to be able to move forward with it, but my sense is they're going to end up going back to a paper pencil, which is not going to give us the value of what the technology was going to give, and be able to get the results back faster, and be able to act upon them, and be able to know where you're at before the end of the school year, which is supposedly the value of going to PARC. So I think those, I would rather stay with MCAS until they have that all worked out, because I think it's a tool that, even though it is not fully articulated, and they haven't gotten into all the other tests that they want to do, at least it's a tool that people know and are familiar with, and can actually keep looking at where you're growing and where you're still having difficulties, before you switch over to a new test that may not directly correlate to where you're at and where you need to go. So I think those pieces are important. In terms of unfunded mandates, I think there are an awful lot of them that come down the pike. I think we were just talking last week when we were visiting about the new one now, about needing to do relationship violence as part of your curriculum, and that's going to go into effect at the beginning of the new school year. So you have to have a plan in place for how you're going to teach about relationship violence, similar to when they put the bullying out, and you have to put a plan in place, and have your curriculum about how you're going to address bullying, and how you're going to investigate bullying. The new one now is, we need to be teaching relationship violence. And I think I've interviewed with many of the newspapers around those kind of mandates, and I said, I understand that as part of a community, we do have a responsibility for some of that, but not everything is a responsibility of the school district. Our primary responsibility is education, and there's a very short window of time that you have to get all of that in, and some of these things really need to be issues that become community pieces of education. We might support it, and we might help it work, but the school system alone should not be the only ones doing those types of supports and putting them in place.
Mrs. Burns?
Curriculum development and professional development are two critical pieces to a strong school district. Please discuss some curriculum and program developments you have created, along with what areas of professional development you have targeted within your district? With all the transitions you have?
Many transitions.
Exactly. You know?
Okay. I do think curriculum development is a key piece of what has to happen every day, and I think there has to be a regular rotational cycle of how you review your curriculum. I prefer a five-year cycle, where each of the five core contents are in a different year in terms of looking at curriculum, and it needing to be done by a team of teachers who are implementing the curriculum, giving their feedback on what's working, what is not working, along with the leaders in the building, in terms of, you might say, okay, we're doing math. Math seems to be okay, but we're noticing a gap now as we move to the Common Core, that we're not doing, you know, fractions really well, because it's now moved down into that fourth grade level, and we need to supplement a little. So it might be that you're not changing the whole curriculum, but you're going to add on a particular unit or a new component into your fourth grade curriculum to ensure that you're addressing that well. And then the next year, it might be, you know, math might go to ELA, might go to the science, might go to the social studies, so that each year, you're looking at a different curriculum, to make sure it's current, and, or if it's not, what are we going to look at for potential resources or materials, in terms of how do we address that content area across the district, to make sure that they're available for students? I don't think that- I don't think that it's always textbook adoption that's the right thing for curriculum. I don't think a book necessarily is the answer to curriculum. I think a lot of it is going to become digitized. And you're going to be pulling resources. So really utilizing your own staff to say, okay, this is the standard. These resources align to that standard. So this would be the unit that we would teach to address these content areas in these standards. In terms of professional development, we've used this team approach in Lawrence regularly in terms of our review. And have found that the teachers actually pick the better curriculums when they have the opportunity to look at and pilot a couple of them and assess them at their own level. So we've done it on mathematics in terms of them picking the curriculum. In terms of professional development, there's a discussion I had a lot this afternoon with some of your staff. I think it's really strategic that you have to have a strong plan about what are the key areas that you need professional development in. And to ensure that staff have the opportunity to participate in strong professional development that is then followed up and monitored once you provide it. Because there are many one-shot trainings that everybody goes to. They were great. But then when you go in the classroom later, you don't see any evidence of that work being done. So we've rolled out, we did universal design for learning because it was a need as we were looking at differentiating for all learners in our classrooms. Special ed, ELL, general ed, and the higher achieving students. So we did that and we rolled that out in pieces over the course of the year. So they took one phase and then they went back and taught within their own school what they had to do. But then we made sure that we did learning walks as we followed up to make sure that it was being implemented. Because other than that, you're spending a lot of money on training that you're not seeing the impact in the classroom. And that's what the goal of that is, is to see that it actually takes hold and is being implemented on a daily basis.
Learning walks, can you explain what that is, please?
Okay. What we consider a learning walk or walkthroughs is we have regular visits to classrooms where we might have an indicator that we're looking at around, it might be higher order thinking. So during the course of that week, we're going in and we're looking at classrooms to assess how frequent are we doing higher order questioning or higher order thinking activities in the classroom. And I do them jointly with school leaders. In our district, we have instructional coaches. They also come along so that we can then give feedback to the teacher about, oh, okay, five times during our 25-minute visit, we noticed that you were engaging students in that higher order dialogue. And it wasn't just what questions or who questions. But it was really making them think and articulate their thinking.
So these coaching teams, I presume that these are the teams where teachers, if they have a question or are uncertain how to execute a particular model?
Right. Then the coaches would help support them in developing that and showing them how to demonstrate those activities in their classroom.
Question. Are these coaches also possibly their evaluators as well?
No. In the coverage district I'm in, those coaches are not. They're part of the teacher's unit.
I know that you were, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, this is about personnel issues. If, well, not do you. If you have staff with performance issues, how do you generally deal with that? And could you provide some examples?
Sure. If I have staff with performance issues, I'm very open in terms of identifying where the issues are that I have, working with them to put together an improvement plan and what I expect to see by a certain timeline. And then we check in on a regular basis about how they're doing and what they're working on. So that could be anyone from the clerk in my office to paraprofessional, to the teachers, to the principal. So right now I have a principal that I'm working with that was struggling with meeting the goals that we had identified on his educator evaluation plan. We've moved more into a directed plan in terms of set timelines for when I expect to see, number of evaluations I expect to see him complete, number of classroom observations in terms of feedback directly given to teachers. And what the timeframe is that so that I can actually monitor that he's actually doing them and getting those skills under his belt in order for him to be able to move either off that directed growth plan or move down into an improvement plan in terms of actions that he's going to have to take to be proficient to move forward.
Thank you, Anna. Keeping on the lines of staffing and dealing with issues, what are your strategies for the recruitment and retention of a high-quality team or high-quality staff?
I think recruitment is a big piece. So I try very hard to work with many of the local colleges in terms of what's available. We're fortunate because we're a larger district. We actually have our own recruitment fair every year because we tend to have more positions that are open each year. But to attend, if you don't have that availability here, to attend the recruitment fairs that are held like Merck in Boston, Lowell often has a recruitment fair. Merrimack Valley tends to have one large one to go and out looking for people. I also would use tools like SchoolSpring, which gives you a national pool of candidates that are looking for your positions. So I think those are other tools that you can use. And oftentimes word of mouth from your own faculty. You know, you put it out to the faculty, hey, you know what? We're going to have an eighth grade opening in mathematics. You know, talk to your friends who might be on other places that might be thinking this would be a good time to move. Because you want to get people to have veteran status too. You don't want to have all brand-new teachers coming into the district or leaders. I think in terms of developing some of that leadership in-house, we talked a bit about that this afternoon, that really looking at developing your own leadership pipeline within your own staff in terms of giving them opportunities to step in and take some leadership roles, not necessarily coming out of the teacher's unit, but taking on maybe some coaching as part of their role so that they start to see how that works. And giving them strategies and techniques and training so that if they do decide they want to become a future leader here in the district, you've already built them and you've been giving them the monitoring and mentoring and helping them get the coursework that they need so that when the time comes, they're ready. So you do some of that active recruitment in your own district to help build your own pipeline for the work you want to get done. In terms of retaining, I think a lot of it has to do with being in an environment where they feel valued, that their work is beneficial to them and that they're seeing growth and progress in the work that they do. So part of being the superintendent is to make sure that they have the tools necessary to do that work and to be successful in getting the work done. And to ensure that they know that the work that they're doing is valued on an everyday basis. And then looking at opportunities for them to be able to move and grow if that's where they want to go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mrs. Bonnash.
Okay. So being the superintendent of schools requires you to think on your feet. One morning you receive a call that there is an intruder in the high school. How do you handle this situation? Please walk us through the steps.
So I receive a call that there's an intruder in the high school. My first call is to make sure the police are aware and that they've been alerted. My second call is to see if the school has been put into a lockdown mode or they've implemented their safety and security protocols. If they're in lockdown, of course, I'm not supposed to enter the building. But I would be on cellphone communication with that principal immediately to find out what's happening, what they're doing, as well as on the other phone line with the police chief, finding out, you know, where are you at? What is the protocol? What are you doing? And a Connect Ed message out to, or Connect, I think you used Connect 5.
I did.
We used Connect Ed. In terms of putting it out to the families about what's happening and keeping them informed on a regular basis so that they know what's happening and that they're calm enough to know that we're going to keep you informed as things are happening and articulating it. Chances are the media will appear very shortly thereafter because they're very quick on their feet to get to these types of events. So actually being ready for them and having statements ready and prepared to have that conversation. And then following up with the staff after things abate and the police have been able to do their work. And coming in and then to briefing and meeting with staff here and talking about how the incident worked and how it unfolded. What didn't work well, what do we need to fix in our protocols and our procedures? And then having an open meeting probably with families here at the school at that time so that they can come in and get their questions answered so it doesn't become a rumor mill about something much bigger than maybe it actually was that happened.
I'm going to follow up on Mrs. Bonnash's question. During our conversation today at lunch, you had mentioned that Lawrence was not implementing or hasn't implemented Alice. As parents, obviously, we're all concerned when we send our kids to school that they're going to be safe in school. As a superintendent, how would you work with, or what would you do to work with safety officials in the town to implement Alice and to make sure that our schools are safe? And I also want you to touch upon a little bit of what you're currently doing in the district, keeping the schools safe.
I believe that it's important that you work closely with the police and fire in terms of looking at your protocols and developing your protocols, the safety in your schools. We talked about that at lunch today with the police and fire. We don't use Alice. We've been using the Nemlec Stars, which I think was what you were probably utilizing before you moved to Alice here in the district. So we actually have, every school has its own crisis plan and crisis response team and a district liaison that's part of the crisis response team that serves on the district crisis team. We work, we have our school resource officers who are part of our ongoing drills and practice that we do in the schools. We have, all of our schools are now in buzzer systems and have safety offices available onsite, all but our three-year-old childhood centers currently because there are locked doors. And you have to be buzzed in or you have to be let in in any of those buildings. So we do drills in all of the schools. They're required to have monthly crisis team meetings to look at what's happened. If there is an incident, they have to debrief the incident and come up with, are there holes in their strategies? And what do they need to put in place in order to ensure that they're addressing protocols in the right way? So we had an incident just this past week. On Friday, we had an incident outside one of our early childhood centers, which was a community incident. But it resulted in the early childhood center being locked down and the police needing to fire their weapon in the house right next door to the school. So it became a big event. But as the school then debriefed, because it was towards the end of the day on Friday, so Monday morning we had a meeting with the staff at the school and debriefed about, how did it work? What did they think went well? They identified a couple of points in the school that they didn't hear the codes that were announced. And that a couple of people weren't as aware of what was going on at that point in time. So they've started talking about how we're fixing that. What are the communication mechanisms they need to make sure and play for those particular areas in the building? So it's a constant review and drill of the plan to make sure that it's not just sitting on the shelf. And we say, oh, yeah, we have a crisis plan. But nobody knows what it means and nobody knows how to utilize it. We work with the police to come in and do some of those drills in-house so that it's not them kind of putting themselves through the paces, but somebody else is coming in and giving them feedback on how they responded to the incident that was brought forward and what other pieces they need to be looking at to address it.
I have since seen the six high schools. And they're all joined together, right?
They stand alone, but they have like one connector that goes across.
Bridges. I am fascinated. I've been trying to memorize. There's a performing arts, right?
Performing and fine arts.
Fine arts. There is a business management and finance, health and.
Human services.
Thank you. International.
International. Math, science, and technology.
How could I forget that?
And humanities and leadership development.
I am curious because I've, maybe I live in a bubble. I'm from a small town originally. But how, I know that with the high school, you're instrumental from conception to completion in that project. How did you come up with, how did you target those six areas to target in building those high school programs? If you can, I'm not, this is off the cuff, so forgive me. I haven't written it down, so. But where did, how did you, I'd like to understand your formulation of coming up with this concept and looking at a new high school. And if you could just walk us through that, those pieces. I'm interested in knowing, actually.
We had one comprehensive high school. As we tried to personalize that high school, because at the time it had about 2,200 students in a school that was built for about 1,500 students. So we were very tight in the old high school. What we did is we moved into a model of houses. And as they, each house would be a ninth through 12th grade so that they were more, a smaller environment that had either an assistant principal or a curriculum leader leading that house. As they started working towards their accreditation work, they started talking about the research around small schools. Some of the work that Bill and Linda Gates' foundation has been doing around the small school development and the personalization of learning. And the teachers starting to look at, well, we would like thematic units. We would like to look at areas that the students are expressing interest in. So we started and we had three at the old high school when we had the house model.
Which three did you start with?
We always had a performing and fine arts because it's a big draw in that community. We had a math, science. The technology wasn't quite the piece at that point in time. And then we had a school that was more about human, and health and human services. So those three were kind of the first foundational's. As we were looking at then needing to build a new high school and we started talking to the staff as they were going through the accreditation work, they talked about kind of the other themes in surveying students about what were their interest levels and what were the areas that they thought were important for them to be developing as they went into high school. And that's how the others came about, except for the international. International came about because we have a very large population of newly arrived students in the country. So originally, international was kind of thought of as a global studies kind of high school. But as it turned out, it's kind of morphed into the program for mostly the newly arrived to the country students so that they can get the more intensive programming that they need. And then after they've become proficient in English, they actually can transfer into one of the other high schools or they can finish their after-school career in international. So as we developed the plan for the high school, it actually was developed with the concept of six small schools on the campus. And then they morphed, as they developed and developed their content, they developed into the six distinct standalone schools that they are. They teach all the same core curriculum areas. So they're all teaching, you know, all the core English, language, arts, math. All of their elective courses are uniquely fine-tuned to their core mission of their school and trying to infuse as much of that into the cores as they're talking. So in, say, the performing and fine arts high school, as they're doing European history, they're not just looking at the history, but they're looking at the arts and the performance area that was happening during that period in history too. So they extend it that way. In the math, science, and technology, if they're working on mathematics problems, they're maybe applying it to an engineering project that they're working on in their robotics component. So they try and infuse them into all of their cores that they're working on. Humanities and leadership development's a little different. A lot of their work is around development of leadership skill. They have become kind of the house of most of our students who are in JROTC. We have a very large JROTC program with about 500 students across the campus participating in that program. And a lot of that is about developing their leadership and developing their skill set to take on leadership roles in the student life and in the community. So they do a lot of service-related work within the community and help do things like build websites for some of our nonprofits within the community. So that kind of morphed as we developed. And then when we had the facility, they were able to fully articulate into the six schools and standalone schools.
Do you, when you say morph, I know it's all a process. Do you have, is it as the staff finds that there's additional interests, that new things are created? Or is it?
No, I think what they did is they started small and they had a small group of interests. And then as the staff worked and they were able to see how all of the linkages would work and how they fit together, like math, science, and technology were a big piece. So they kind of fit those pieces into the play. And the students then select into one of the schools that is their interest areas that they're interested in. So I know we had talked about the eighth grade.
I'm fascinated by that.
How do we make a decision at eighth grade, really kind of what career path I want to do?
Do they dabble, can they dabble in the other high schools? For, I mean.
What we do is we spend time during that eighth grade year. They come over to the high school. They get to visit the different schools. Each of the schools goes out and presents what they have to offer in their schoolhouse. The students then apply to one of them as their primary choice. But then by the time into ninth grade or into 10th grade, they can opt to go to one of the other high schools if they find that really, yeah, I liked business, but I really don't want to go into business. I think I'm more in the math and science. I'd like to go to the math and science technology. Because during the first two years, most of their core is the same in terms of their instruction. And their electors really get more intensified in 11th and 12th grade.
You just said something that I now need to ask you. You state that the students apply. And I presume that you only have so many seats for so many students of that, that size. Do you waitlist or do they have, are they asked to have two choices?
They do three choices.
Three choices.
We've been averaging for the last four years, about 89% to 90% of kids actually get their first choice.
Oh, okay.
And then we get to second choice on some of them. So sometimes it's a conversation about, did you really choose that because that's your interest? Or did you choose it because all your friends are going to that school? And having that dialogue and then they say, oh, yeah, I wanted to go there because my friends were going there. But, yeah, I'm okay with, my second choice would really be fine with me. And then they can choose out after the year.
And how are your guidance counselors used within the high schools?
We have two guidance counselors. We have two guidance counselors in each of our high schools. They divide up the students. Sometimes they're, it depends on, each school may do it a little different. But some do the ninth and 10th graders and the others do the 11th and 12th. So they're doing more of the college work. And the ninth and 10th graders are doing more, kind of getting them used to high school, making sure they're getting their credits, following up on their attendance if they're having issues, making sure that they're in class on a regular basis and addressing those types of issues. And then at the upper grades, they're actually, because each school's class size at each grade level, you know, so you might have a senior class that's maybe 130, 140 in any one school. So it's a little more manageable sometimes to be able to do all of that instead of being one doing 700.
Spectrum, right.
But they actually come in and they, are part of the advisory programs in each of the schools. So they go in and they do a lot of their work during advisory blocks. And then they see every one of their students at least once or twice during the beginning of the school year, mid-year, and then as they're getting ready to, get ready for scheduling for the next year.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Dr. Berger, I know you have a lot of budget experience. Can you go through the process that you go through with the budget and how do you prioritize cutting the budget in the developmental stage?
Our budget process has worked. It's been a little different this year. It's a new process that they're using, but I'll talk about mine and how we've done them in the past. What we do is we, because we've got a chapter 70 funded district, so we always tend to know what our bottom line figure is going to be based on what contributions are from the city and what we have in terms of chapter 70 dollars. So we start with each staff, looking at every teacher and every staff member. So every principal gets their staff list. They talk about kind of what they're looking at in terms of any positions they think they need to move or change. They get their budget in terms of all of their other resources, their materials, their operating counts, the technology, all of the money that they have play over. And then they draft a budget with their leadership team in terms of what they need to be able to do their work based on their improvement plans or their annual school plans. Once they do that, they send in their drafts. Some years, we know that the budget may be less than we thought. So they send in their draft with a draft with a reduction of 2% to 5%, so that they're prioritizing what things they would take out of their budget if they need to be. Then we meet one-on-one as a team. So it's, would be myself, the finance person, the human resources director, the curriculum person, and they bring, we bring the principal in. And we go through all of their budget work. We talk about every single teacher that they have in their building in terms of, you know, effectiveness and why are you keeping them? Oh, you're moving that person? What are you going to do with the person that was in that position? So that they're really being thoughtful about how they're using the money because we tell them clearly that if you haven't evaluated that person out, you own that person. So you need to be utilizing that person in some capacity within your building. It's not, they get put on a board somewhere and somebody's going to take them away. And then we talk about where are their resources, what are their needs? And if they had a wish list, we allow them to give us the wish list and prioritize ordering in case other resources become available through grants or some, you know, generous donation that wants to come our way. After we've met with each individual school, we then compile that budget and what the district needs are because the district carries like benefits, health insurance, you know, health insurance, workers' comp, substitutes for the district. So we look at those pieces and as much as possible, we try and cut from the district budgets so that we're not hitting the school budgets because it's too hard to try and adjust for them when they already have such a small pool of money for them to run their operation. And then that's how we build our master budget. That budget then goes out to public review. Public hearing is held. School committee then approves that budget, has their adjustments to it. It's brought back for a final vote to the school committee and then goes over to the mayor by the first of May. So we're a much later process than I know what you would do in terms of town, town meeting. So we always look at what are the needs, what are the priorities for the district and where those resources are going to be aligned to address the needs that the schools have. This year, we've changed it a bit. We've gone to more of a weighted school formula, per pupil allocation. As we move towards some of the schools becoming more autonomous in their decision-making about programs and enrichment activities that they want to do within their school. So they were given the resources for what their current salaries are. They were given the resources for what we've spent as a district on some of their, their work that they've been doing because no longer will the district be supporting that. It'll go in your budget and you need to be making those decisions. So it's been a whole spin on how budgeting is happening in the district. So it's been a learning curve for many of the school leaders that have been used to saying, oh, I have these staff. I know I'm getting the money for these staff. Now it's saying, oh, I like that staff, but wait, look at the salary that staff is going to take and I can't afford that. So it's been an ongoing discussion with the leaders, but having them have control on their budget of what they need in the school is important.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. I've got a two-parter for you.
Okay.
What do you think the biggest challenges facing our district and how do you propose to overcome it?
Okay. Let me think back to some of the discussions I had today.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I think some of the challenges, and we looked at some of the data, was we looked at, and I've looked at, I think some of your middle school data is flattened, flattened out. And I think that's a challenge to, how do you kind of move that forward and start to see some of the growth happening at the middle school? Because some of your growth data at the lower grades is good. And then when they get to the high school, it seems to get good again. So something's happening in the middle and really looking at that. Some of the staff said there's some issues on climate culture that can impact in terms of effectiveness and what's happening in the school. So really needed to take a look at what's happening at the middle school currently in terms of what's happening in the classrooms, but what's happening in the overall climate and culture and success in the building would be the first thing. So to overcome that, I think it's really getting in and seeing firsthand what's happening, looking at the data, and then having those conversations with leaders and the teachers and coming to, okay, so what are the big issues? How do we address those issues and how do we work jointly to make the improvements that need to happen within that school?
Okay, great. Thank you. Mrs. Punish.
So I'm going to be specific about parent communication. How would you handle a parent who calls, who is unhappy with their child placement? They want a different teacher? Or a parent who calls and wants their bus stop moved?
Okay. One, I would take the, I would take the call. I would have that conversation with them. Ask them if they've had any discussion at the schoolhouse first because I think always things should be happening at the foundation of where they originate. So in terms of there's an issue with the teacher, have you talked to the principal? What's happening? Why? And what are the rationale for that? And then circle back with them and the principal. If they're not willing to go to the principal directly, I would go back to the principal and have that conversation first and have that discussion. Unless there was a really legitimate reason for making a move in terms of a classroom move, I would tend to not do that. I think it's very disruptive to both the child and, and the school itself and the teacher itself. But if there was a compelling reason for, you know, something was happening within that classroom that was impacting the child's ability to be successful in the classroom, you know, they came to me and said, you know, my child is being harassed and bullied constantly and nothing's being done. And we could document that indeed those things are happening. I would be more inclined to look at options that might be more valuable for that child to be successful. Terms of bus stop moves, I think you have to look at that in terms of how does that impact everybody else? So to move the bus stop for one person, then has a trickle effect for everybody else that's on that bus route going forward. So you have to know how the timing of the bus works and how many minutes it takes to get between stops. And sometimes you have to say no if it's not going to work for everybody else that has to take that bus also.
So since we are in the middle of this right now, I'd like to hear your experiences with collective bargaining and your relationship with a union and what you view the role of the school committee in the different stages of the bargaining process.
Okay. I've sat in on collective bargaining for pretty much all nine of our unions over the last 10 years. I did not do this past collective bargaining. That was the receiver's work and he took care of the teachers' union that just completed their newest contract. I think part of the collective bargaining and the school committee's role in that is really to set what are some of the issues that you feel that you need to get addressed in a contract, along with the superintendent and the leadership telling you some of the things that they feel may not be working well in the contract as it sits, or things that are new initiatives that you think need to be part of a contract to ensure that we have everybody on board for going forward on those initiatives. I think a lot of it is a give and take. You know, you, sometimes you go in with what your proposals are. The union's going to counter with their proposals. And oftentimes, it's somewhere in the middle that is really the ground you want to get to. So you work with that and come up with the, the plan of action of how you want to address those. And I think some of that is where the school committee comes in in terms of what are you hearing? Because you, we know, you get the phone calls from the union leaders saying, hey, what's happening? What's going on with our contract? And, you know, what's the hold up or things like that. But being, be able to have a united front about what is it that the district is trying to do within a contract and what changes are going to help move the district forward and working with the union leaders to see the roles that they're playing in making that happen. In terms of relationships with the union, I've had a good working relationship with pretty much all of our union leaders at this point. I feel very comfortable. I can pick up a call if there's something going on and I can call the union president and say, I'm giving you a heads up. This has happened. We're going to be talking to this teacher about this, this incident. We have asked to have the union representative there so that it's not caught off guard because then it tends to become a bigger issue than what it could have been if you just gave a heads up and talked to them about it. We've been able to resolve most of our grievance issues at the schoolhouse and not have them, have to come up to a large scale district-level superintendent grievance. The unions have worked hard to embrace some of the changes that have happened, particularly as some of our schools went into level four status. And some of the changes had to happen and had to happen pretty rapidly. So we were able to work jointly to come to those resolutions rather than becoming adversarial and needing to go through a joint resolution committee to come up with what the plan is and really drag out the process. We were able to come to an agreement that we came to together as the district and the union to put forward the changes that we needed to have happen to rapidly accelerate the change in those schools. So I think it's really about building the relationship and understanding and respecting that they have their, their role and function to have within the district and they're, they're there to protect their union members and to make sure that they're getting the support and services that they need. But our missions are not that misaligned. My job is to protect the role and function of the district and ensure that the students are getting, and the teachers are getting the support or the parents are getting the support or any other unions getting the support. And it's about making sure that we come to the same place that this is what is good for both the district and the staff that you're trying to address needs on.
Really quick, you just mentioned something which is different from a question that I asked, but in all the different schools in Lawrence, there are some level four schools, some level two schools. Why the difference in, in the levels of the schools within the same district?
It's, sometimes it's been changes in leadership, changes in staffing. So we found that we have four level one schools. Of the four level one schools, they've had the most stable leadership and most stable teaching force. So you begin to develop a rapport and you're able to actually work as a team because you've been working so well together for a long time. Our level four schools, we found, were schools that had much higher turnover in terms of staff, maybe higher turnover in terms of students. So we have a transancy rate within the district. The kids who move from school to school as well as newcomers to the district are about 25%. So oftentimes that, you know, you're getting the newer students and you're feeling like you're not making the progress that you need to make. And sometimes you kind of slow down the pace thinking you need to do things differently instead of ramping up and saying, no, we're going to get you on board faster and moving and accelerating. So I think there's a wide variety of reasons that you have the variety. What we've always been challenged is how do I have a level one elementary school in the same building, a level four middle school? When they're the same kids. So the same kids that are coming out of that level one elementary going to that middle school. And as we started digging in, there was a high turnover in core content teachers. And so, and, and leadership. So we found as we stabilized the leadership, the schools stabilizing, the staff stabilizing, the scores were increasing.
Thank you. And I apologize to the school committee for asking two questions, but it, it was in my mind, so I had to say it. Thank you.
No worries. I only have one question. It's my last question that I, what would you, what do you see as your greatest accomplishment in your current district? I have 33 years to...
It's a long time.
I think...
Can you give me the top three? That's easier. I mean, that's... Thinking back, there's been so many different pieces in my time. I think one of the greatest accomplishments is actually putting together a comprehensive support service delivery system within the district. So that you have teams in every school that are working and then include a nurse, a counselor, a parent liaison, the leadership and a teaching staff in terms of how do you address and identify student needs and make sure that you're able to bring in resources to address those. So I think that's worked well and every school is, is done very well with utilizing that and bringing in community resources. I think another big accomplishment, and it's been an ongoing one for, I think this is our 12th or 14th year, we have a ongoing, what we call Agency Partnership Assistance Network, where we bring in all the service agencies in the community and we meet with them every other month throughout this course of the school year. So we get updates on what new activities are happening in the community, what kind of programs are available for students who might have intensive needs. For us, a lot of it's mental health service delivery to address those needs, family services that are available for parents who may be struggling or need supports. And we share with them kind of where we're going as a district, what are the new initiatives that are being in place. So they, as they start seeing families, they're also articulating those same things to their families so that they're, they're networking with our families, bringing back information and then sharing out information that we've been able to bring forward in the group meetings. Let's see. So that's two. You want a third?
You've got one.
Okay. I think the other one is really looking at programming and designing programming that provided for intensive special needs services within district. So the development of our therapeutic day school. So we now have 200 students enrolled in our therapeutic day school, which is in, in district. There were students in the past we probably would have sent out of district because we didn't have the intensive services that they need. But we've been able to provide those services in a, in a model that very closely mirrors an out-of-district school, has all the intensive therapeutic services, has ongoing support through a crisis team within the community if there's a need, has the academic rigor that we expect within our own schools. And those students are passing MCAS at a very high rate. And I think it's been a better resource for parents in terms of them being able to feel like their students are part of a community and able to be with their own peers after school hours and get to know their community members. It has reduced our out-of-district numbers by, over about five years, from 300 and something down to about 130 that we have out of district currently.
That's half, that's 50%. Just about.
A big, big drop.
Very good. Thank you.
And those, then those resources get to be used in other ways to address needs.
Bring, you only bring it back into the district as opposed to, you know, sending it out. So, very good. Thank you.
Dr. Berger, I know you have extensive experience in special education. And I know also that Lawrence has, I believe it's a 20% special ed population.
So 22.
22%. Clearly coming to Wilmington, it's a little less. So you'll have a little bit more of a mix. Have you had any innovative ideas to cover all, all areas of the educational experience, including those with higher level students? And can you give examples?
Sure. We've done a lot of work with some of our higher performing students in terms of providing them with options for dual enrollment coursework that they can take during high school and be getting their college credits at the same time as they're fulfilling their requirements at the high school level. At the elementary or middle school level, we've done a lot of online and additional supports and giving them resources that they can then do project-based activities that will earn them some credits as they're going into the high school level because those kids need to move rapidly and provide additional resources for them. For the general ed students, we've done a lot of differentiation within the classroom in general because even that general ed student is, there's a wide spectrum of where they fall in the, in the continuum in terms of needs and supports. So we've done a lot of work with developing workshop models in our classrooms so that they're getting their direct lesson, they're doing their guided practice in a smaller group, they're doing individual practice while the teacher's able to circulate and give additional attention to individual students in areas where they need the additional supports. So I think it's, it's really looking at what are the needs within the classroom and coming up with resources that will help support every student, whether they need the remedial or they need the enrichment and able to move forward. We've also grown in a lot of partners from the community. So we have partners that are coming in and doing, you know, science for engineers at the high school level. So they're, they're getting that as an activity in lieu of a class because they've now passed the coursework that they need. Doing robotics and coming in and actually competing in a robotics competition with engineers from Raytheon being there. from Raytheon, being their mentors and their supports. We have college-level professors that will come in and teach on campus at the high school level if we have enough of a cohort to take the class because you can't always get them to the university and back in time for the next class. So doing those innovative things with the universities in the area has helped to allow for those students to really have the skills to move more rapidly through and actually end up in college with potentially two or three classes under their belt.
Thank you. Great. Should we hire you? Please describe your strategy for tackling the first ninety days on the job.
Okay. I think my strategy for tackling the first ninety days is to do a lot of fact-finding and listening. I think staff asked me today, what are you going to change as soon as you come in? I said, no, I'm not going to change as soon as I come in. I think you really have to step back, find out what's reality, find out what's actually happening in each of the schools, get a good sense from the community about where they are and what they're looking for, and then slowly look at where are the big levers that you can make the change that will have the greatest impact in terms of moving forward with the district. And sometimes that means, you know what? There are too many initiatives going on. We need to scale back on some of them so that we can put our focus in on the two or three that are going to really allow teachers to implement them well and that they're going to really give you the push that you need to move your achievement to where you want it to go. Because sometimes we call it initiative fatigue. We're big on taking on every new thing that comes in, but then we're not doing anything well. And you really need to start and say, okay, wait a second. There are five things. We really need to focus on these two because these two are going to give us the biggest bang for where we need to go this school year. Those next ones, then we build those after we've been able to really get these two in place. They're strong, they're being implemented well, we're monitoring them well, and then we can add to that because now teachers are more comfortable, they've already got this foundation. We can build on that foundation with the next level of the work that needs to get done.
Thank you.
So you said in your introduction that you weren't really looking to leave Lawrence, but this came across your desk. I'm sure other things like this have come across your desk. So I'm just wondering why Wilmington?
I think as I read what you were looking for in a superintendent and read about your community, it resonated more with me about where I want to be in my professional career at this point in time. So I looked at it more closely. I did a lot of research before I even filled out the application. I wanted to kind of get a sense of what the community was, what your district looked like in terms of your scores and your achievement and where some of the issues were that I might be having to deal with if I were to come. And then I decided, yeah, it was the right time. It was the right time for me and I thought I had a good match for some of the skillset that you were looking for in the superintendent that you were searching for. That's the only reason I applied.
I have a question, but I just want to follow up on Mrs. Parnish's question real quick. You've been in Lawrence for thirty-four years, you said. During that time, have you ever thought about applying for a superintendent position or about leaving Lawrence and why hadn't you for that?
There was one time that I did apply for a special education director position. And at that time, that was just before we created the Student Support Services Division. And I think it was because I felt I needed a change, I needed to grow and expand from what I had been doing. Though you never get far from special ed, once you're in special ed, you never really get to stray too far. And I did, I applied, I went through the interview, I was being considered, and the superintendent at that time said, wait a second, I don't want you to leave. We have, we have a job that we're developing currently that we think you would be the right fit for. So at that time, I stayed and actually helped to build some of my skillset because it allowed me to move into another direction that allowed me to grow and flourish.
Okay. So, okay.
Go ahead.
So you talked about consistent leadership being important in the schools. In general, I want to know about your leadership style. Examples of how you would manage teachers, principals, and also staff at central office. Can you, can you talk about your style and how you would do that?
Sure. I think you would find that I'm, would consider collaborative leadership style and believe in distributed leadership in terms of having teams of people that are, of working on tasks together and helping to inform decisions that need to be made and ultimately made at my level. Having buy-in and input from people is critical to having them be part of the process to make those decisions that they're going to have to help implement and be part of that decision-making. I have no problem ultimately needing to make the decision if we're not coming to a consensus and say, okay, you've had your say, we've all had input and articulation, but ultimately this is the route we're going to have to go now if we can't come to a decision. I believe in working and mentoring with the principals in terms of them being part of the decisions and part of the teamwork that has to get done. I think that they need to be able to feel that their voices are heard and they're telling you what's happening day-to-day in a schoolhouse and being able to feel that their voice is valued in terms of what needs to happen next and be part of the solution in terms of where we're going to go as a district. Because without them being part of the solution, I can lead wherever I want to lead, but nobody's following behind me to get the work done. Same with the teachers. We talked a bit today with the teachers about I need to have teacher voice and teacher leadership. Being part of the solution to whatever needs to happen within your own school is critical. So they need to own the process, they need to own some of the work that needs to get done, they need to be part of the team that's helping to build their school to the direction it needs to go while I build the leadership to the direction the district needs to go. So I think that's a piece of my leadership that's worked effectively for me in the past. I don't try and micromanage everything that you're doing, but I'm going to hold you accountable for the work that you are doing. And I'm going to assess where you are at and how you're implementing things and let you know when I think you're going a little astray and need to come back and reassess where you're going and help you reprioritize to make sure that you're being successful.
Thank you.
I would ask my question.
Excellent, okay, Dr. Craig?
Okay, I have another question. If we choose to hire you, what will we be thinking about that decision in five years?
I would hope that you would be thinking that we've accomplished many of the goals and objectives that we've set and any strategic plan that we've developed for the next five years.
Excellent, thank you. I think I'm done. You're all set?
One more quick question.
Okay.
Can you, can you talk to us, I know that Lawrence and Wilmington are different, urban versus community. We like to say we have a small community here. So can you talk to us about your relationship with the community and what you perceive as a superintendent's role is within the community?
Of course, Lawrence is also my native home, so I know the community very well. But I think a superintendent's role is to be very visible within the community, to be at events, to be seen, to be accessible to community members in terms of listening to what they're thinking and what they're saying. It's not uncommon for me to be at almost any event that's happening in any school or if there's a big event happening in the city, I make sure that I'm in attendance. If there's city council meeting that's talking about anything to do with the schools, I want to make sure that I'm there so that if there's a question or a concern that comes up, I can address it on the spot and it doesn't fester or they don't say, oh, we have to hold on this because we don't know what the answer is. But I think it's a visibility piece, getting to know everybody and making sure that they know you and that they can reach out to you if there are concerns, that you can address them before they become major problems that could have easily been resolved by reaching out and picking up the phone and having a discussion about them. So I think the role there is to really be kind of your educational leader, putting on the good face, the best face of your school district and articulating that to the community in any venue that you're able to do so.
Thank you.
All righty, I think we've exhausted our questions for you, so I'd like to give you an opportunity to say some closing words to us or perhaps ask us questions. I know you have had the opportunity to ask a lot today. I think we're all...
Done a lot of talking.
Yeah, I think we're all exhausted.
I think in terms of a closing statement, one, I want to thank you. I've had a wonderful day in the, in the community today. I really enjoyed getting to see the schools, walking into schools where I saw students engaged and happy to be there, teachers really working hand-in-hand with, with students and just carrying on their work like it didn't matter that you came in or who you were or that they were just glad to be with their students and doing their work. It's a community, I think, that has a lot to offer, a lot to offer their children. And I think I would like to see us be able to maximize that if I come into Wilmington. And of course, my goal is level one status for all of your schools. I know some people don't care about the status, but I think when you have the potential, you might as well get that and have that number attached to you as saying, listen, you're doing the best quality education you could possibly give. And I think that's important for you, it's important for your staff to have that recognition that they are top-notch, that they are doing the best possible education you can give to your students. I will tell you, I don't get frazzled easily. I'm pretty calm overall. I don't think there's much that could happen here that I probably haven't experienced or wouldn't, would know how to address if it came up at this point in time. And I'd be really pleased to be working in this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for spending the day for us.
Thank you.
Okay. I think at this point, I get to ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Mullis, can I have a second?
Motion to adjourn.
Excellent, okay. Well said. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.